Report out on our closed session.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council was briefed on all four items on the closed session agenda, but no reportable action was taken. And that is it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and adjourn our special meeting. Okay, I'd like to go ahead and call to order the city council meeting for September the 3rd, 2019. Can I get a roll call, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Here.
Councilmember Yu?
Here.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Here.
Mayor Fish?
Here. Okay, I'd like to invite everyone to please stand for our invocation, which will be done tonight by Darrell Celtic from the Community of Christ Church at 9468 Broadway. Then remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Troop 174. Scouts presenting the flags are Jordan Mendoza, Hunter Abbott, Jaredon Nim, and Casey Kim. Troop 174's next outing will be a day at the beach on September 14th. It will be a full day of fun for both the scouts and their families.
Thank you very much. Our divine Creator, we thank you for this world that you have created. We thank you for this city in this beautiful day, though it's too hot. It provides us warmth, too much warmth, and light for all we do. We thank you that we are able to be here in this community, in this nation, where the rules of law and love prevail. May we indeed tap into that this evening as we conduct this city's business. It is for this reason that we would come into your presence this evening and ask for your blessing upon us all, that we may do about the city's business this evening. May the city council and their staff have your wisdom to be with them as they seek to do those things which would make this an even better community. We know not what the future may bring, but would ask their Creator that in all we do, we may not do so just for us, but for the generations to come after us, that they indeed might look back in their time and say, and say thank you to us. It is for these reasons we give thanks to your Lord, for future generations, and for us here today. Amen.
Detail. Board march. Detail. All. Post. All those not in uniform, please place your right hand over your heart. Scott Slue, please follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Detail. Reform. Detail. About fish. Detail. Board march.
Thank you. Thank you, Peggy, for having it so cool in here. Appreciate that. Okay. Our next item is ceremonial matters, but I believe that's going to be moved to another...
That will be, thank you, Mayor Fish, that'll be moved to a future council meeting.
Okay, excellent. Public comments not listed on the agenda. The city council will now hear public comments regarding Autumn. Items not listed on the agenda. First, I have Steve Stafford.
Mayor Fish, Mayor Protem Chavez, council members, city staff, my name is Steve Stafford. I attended the last public safety meeting. One thing that was brought up is the parking problem at all the schools, all the Temple City schools in their school district. It's a very acute problem. It's really acute at Oak Avenue, and they have an area that they can do that, build a parking lot off of Emperor. They used to have this six-space parking lot off of Camino Real, and there's a gate where that parking lot used to be, still there. And the teacher, there's a substitute teacher that lived down, I think, on Flaherty, right there by Cloverly. He went up to sub in for a teacher that was sick. He ends up with a ticket because there's no place to park. This has been totally been a problem for years, and I'd like to see it addressed. The second thing is, I don't know if you guys are aware, but RePlanted, who does the recycling bins here in Temple City, they filed for bankruptcy last week. They're out of business. They closed them all about the middle of August, and they've been closed. Sometimes cans and bottles stack up there. People bring them and leave them there. There is a place where people can go on the 200 block of East Chestnut in Monrovia. And I think we need to address, if those things are going to be left there, what to do with them. Doesn't seem like the company's going to pick them up. So I don't know what we can do, but I'd like to see both of these issues addressed because they, the district probably has the money to deal with it. They have the property to deal with it, especially at Oak. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Next, we have Edward Barrera. He is the new field representative for our Senator Rubio's office. And Barrera is my grandmother's maiden name, so maybe we're related.
You just stole my thunder. I don't need to speak now.
I'm just saying.
So, as the mayor says, my name's Edward Barrera, and I am from Senator Susan Rubio's office.
Excellent.
I was actually here a few weeks back. I wanted to introduce myself, but I wanted to wait until after the council meeting, but once it hit 10 o'clock, I was like, I'm not sure when you all are going to... So this time, I was given some very, very good recommendation to speak beforehand. So once again, I'll leave my cards. I'm already talking to Brian Cook about some things that maybe the senator can attend here in Temple City.
Yes.
I will be, I'll drop my cards off with Brian, and please don't hesitate to reach out to me if you need anything. I mean, I know that you all have already, you know, reached out to the senator and have a good working relationship with her, so I just want to help try to continue that. So thank you.
Excellent. Well, thank you. Nice to meet you. And hopefully, we'll see you also at some of our events.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Now you can leave early.
Yeah. Okay, consent calendar. We actually...
Motion to approve?
No, hold on, hold on.
Mayor and council, if I may, I need to make a correction for item 7D, approval of payments for the city for fiscal year 1920. The resolution number should be 195422 instead of 195421.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, can I get a motion?
With that change, a motion to approve consent calendar?
Second.
Okay. Okay, we're going to move on to public hearing. We have none unfinished business. We have none new business.
Mayor and the council, this is, item is acceptability of limited liability insurance and indemnity policy proposed by Lyft, Inc., in a proposed rideshare partnership agreement between the city and Lyft. Mr. Murphy will provide the bulk of this presentation today. Everything we do at the city is risky at some level or another, but we do have some usually try to negotiate on a case-by-case basis. Not all risk is the same, and we wanted to be able to talk to you about something that's not, I wouldn't call it outside of the norm, but just something that got us a little bogged down, and Mr. Murphy will go over that in terms of our discussions with Lyft for a potential rideshare program. If we were to come back to you, the agreement would be funded out of Prop A funds. Prop A funds are the funds that are used for dial-a-ride, those kind of programs. We actually have a surplus in that on a yearly basis. That surplus has an ending fund balance right now of about 1.1 million. It's different than Prop C or other funding sources where we can pay for roads and other things as well. Prop A is only exclusively for transit-oriented type of activity, and we usually don't have enough money, or enough activities to fund all that's needed related to that. So that's why we've been having a surplus and a balance in Prop A going forward. So with that, Mr. Murphy.
So the issue that has come up, and the reason we're here tonight, in general, when the city enters into contracts with consultants or other contractors, we require the contractor to indemnify the city for all the actions that they undertake during the course of the contract. We also require certain levels of insurance be maintained. And the insurance levels are generally, as advised by Cal JPIA, our risk authority. So something like our current dial-a-ride program would have a certain level of insurance. If our dial-a-ride provider were to get into an accident, you can imagine the claims would be somewhat high were their vehicle to be relatively full, or they were to hit another vehicle that's relatively full. So we want a high level of insurance, and we want full indemnity. Lyft is a somewhat, I don't want to say unique, but a rare company. It's not unique. There's another one just like it, but it's rare in that what they are providing, according to them, is essentially a service by which they are matching riders up with drivers. Because of that, they have a, an insurance limit of $1 million per ride. Certainly a fine limit. It's the kind of limit that we would put in place for the average contractor doing business with the city, but it's substantially lower than the kind of limit that we would seek for a transit-type work, because all of the work is done with vehicles, and again, one accident could cause potential liability well in excess of $1 million. In addition, they are proposing and actually standing very hard on their proposal to not indemnify the city for any losses other than losses arising from breach of contract, violation of certain representations and warranties in the contract, allegations related to intellectual property rights, or other legal violations by the company. Now again, negligence by a driver is not a legal violation by the company, so they wouldn't be indemnifying the city at all. As Mr. Cook said, everything we do involves some level of risk. This is a relatively innovative program. It's a program that certainly has the interest of the council. What I did not want to do was either stand pat and see this whole contract process grind to a halt and ultimately die because of legal concerns and concerns from the risk authority, or completely waive what would be my concerns and JPIA's concerns, run forward with this, and then have you asking me questions when we brought a fully negotiated contract to you for execution. Both of those were unfair, so I wanted to give you a chance to give me direction tonight. Are you satisfied with the limitations on liability that Lyft provides? And if so, then we can run forward pretty quickly to complete the contract and bring that to you and get the program started, or do you want us to continue to negotiate those two items? Either way is fine by me, and I'm willing to take any direction you give tonight. Thank you ver... And I'm sorry, one final matter, and it's said in the staff report. Cal JPIA says that all activities under this program will be covered, but if there is a payout, the payout would be reflected in future years' premiums. So because we wouldn't be shifting that risk to Lyft, you would see that risk in future year premiums if that risk were to unfortunately come to fruition.
Greg, is that...
Yes, Mayor?
I'm sorry, is that risk in the pool, the increase in premiums, or to our individual city?
It's a combination of, there is a formula that JPIA uses. So put all risk in one bucket. You're adding this as a level of another activity that we're doing in our municipal affairs. So it's a bit of a combination of both. They, it's a pretty complicated formula, but one element, not the only element, but one element of it is, are the losses that are incurred by the agency.
Just to follow up, as you know, we are in a risk pool, so the entire pool shares the risk.
The risk.
But of course, when it comes to the end of the year and they look at what the premiums are going to be, as Brian mentioned, there is a sort of convoluted, you know, thing, evaluation they use. If those were your losses individually, I mean, they look at the city.
Our city.
They will look at the city losses, so...
It's not a one-for-one ratio.
It's not a one-on-one.
No. It's not dollar-for-dollar. It's kind of, it's called cap loss. Here's a program, and they look, and they look at you, they look at several different factors. Size of city, activities, level of activities, amount of employees, a history of prior losses, a bunch of other factors that are involved, so that, so for example, not one loss. So say from one activity, say it'd be this activity, we have one bad loss one year. It's not, the whole entire loss is not going to hit us completely, but it will adjust over time in part, as part of that formula. It's the best way I can just explain it.
And if you continue having losses, obviously has...
Yeah, if you have a history of losses, that's when you really get nailed with things.
But at the whole, they're shared by the risk pool.
Greg, I have a question. Other cities that are contracting with Lyft, are they requiring the same insurance?
The contracts I have seen have accepted Lyft's limitations. Yes.
Go ahead, Vince.
Mr. Murphy, I want to understand when you, when you say that we offer indemnity for breach of contract and violated representation warranties. So if the driver had committed an act of negligence, gone to a car accident, and he was clearly in the wrong, and then somebody sued us and the city as well, because it's a city program, that means that Lyft would not indemnify the city, right?
That is correct. The city would be responsible for its own defense, which means that JPIA would pick up the cost of defense, and JPIA would pick up any amount that the city was found to be liable for.
But over and above the $1 million?
In general, over and above the $1 million. That would tend to be the first, the first pool that...
And I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt your question, but just one other question I have is, I'm not sure what you mean by specialized $1 million insurance policy for every ride that is undertaken. Does that mean that they will pay up to $1 million per ride for any act of negligence, either on their part or anything that the city could be responsible for?
So they have not fully fleshed out to us what their specialized policy means. What I do understand from them is that it is $1 million coverage on every single ride taken through their platform. Unlike normal insurance, and the JPIA insurance is not normal, but unlike normal insurance, the insurance each of us has to carry when we drive, there is not a total, total coverage. You always have a per incident or per claim, and then a total.
Well, you have a per person and then per incident.
Per incident.
Okay, so that's what I was trying to ask, is this $1 million, when you say per ride, what if there were multiple riders in that car, which there are?
It's per ride.
Is that going to just be a $1 million for that ride if two or three people are injured? Because two or three injuries can add up.
And there's personal injury, property injuries.
So I, you know, I'm really not sure what this, I would like to know a little bit more about what this $1 million really covers.
Right.
I think we need to know that so that, you know, we can make a judgment on that. And then two, would, do intentional acts qualify as legal violations? Because I know that we're concerned about negligence, auto accidents, things like that, but we all know that, we've heard stories in the newspaper, that some of the Lyft drivers sometimes don't act like they should, and they commit an intentional act, whether it be an assault, sexual violations, things like that. Are those acts going to be indemnified for? That's what I would want. Do they, because that might, that to me, without knowing their definition of a legal violation, if they commit a crime, that is a legal violation pretty much.
Right. What they would, what they would say, what they have said is that the drivers are not Lyft employees, so that, so no, they bear no need to...
So they're not going to cover any intentional acts by the drivers either?
By the drivers. The drivers are independent contractors who are on their own.
Yeah, and then that's where I suppose JPIA coverage would have to kick in. So we're on the hook for dollar one for any intentional acts by the drivers.
Correct.
Greg, does Lyft, and just because I don't know, does Lyft require them to have insurance?
Yes, it does. I believe their limit is at least $500,000. I don't believe they require $1 million. I believe they require $500,000.
I would assume they would, but I just wanted to make sure that that was...
They do. One of the reasons that this came up, the position we took was that they have the ability to vet the drivers. We understand that they're not employees, but they have the ability to vet them, and they have certain requirements for them, and so we felt that we were not in a position to limit our scope of risk where they were. And they said, no, we do very limited vetting. We do require insurance. We have limited background checks, and then the people are allowed to become independent contractors and work off of our app. It's, you know, I guess I can say, and return to your question earlier, Madam Mayor, other cities undertaking programs like this are accepting this, and the companies that are providing company coupons through Lyft for their employees are also accepting this. This is a standard that Lyft will not deviate from, so...
But we may know those numbers. We don't know the numbers of those cities who have chosen not to accept that.
That's correct.
Very true.
And, may I...
No, go ahead, because I have another question.
I have a follow-up question to Mayor Protem's question, because I think that that was a very insightful question, but are there things that we can do as a city to limit that kind of liability? Let's say if people use our program, they have to be in agreement that they don't come after us or anything. Is there, are there things that we can do when they use our program?
Like waivers.
Waivers, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So do you sign up with Lyft?
I don't know. I mean, I don't...
Do you sign something with Lyft?
No, I never sign anything.
You sign a term, terms and conditions when you sign up for the app.
When you sign up on the app, right. Because I know you do with Uber.
But in terms of the cities, it is a code that goes in as a broader program, but I think, we can explore what the other liability waiver options are in that, and if there's even, for example, if we could build into the program with some minimal cost, maybe some additional layer that's on top of that as well, like a supplemental layer, similar... The first thing that comes to mind is like, when we do special events, we buy an additional layer that can provide us that layer of coverage before, and then, and then, so it hits, so it hits different people first. It hits the driver first, it hits Lyft first, then it hits our additional layer before Mayor Protem Chavez, he's at an executive board meeting at JPIA.
But that, of course, can raise the cost of...
It could raise the cost, but we'll see, but I mean, we're already kind of, there's programmatic costs that are there. We would just try, that would be part of the cost we would, that would, I would think that would be an eligible cost within the Prop A funds to be able to do this program.
Can I answer a real quick question?
Okay, hold on.
Go ahead.
Councilman, Councilman Mann.
Thanks.
I know you've been waiting patiently.
Thank you. In the context of maybe something we're more familiar with, how is this type of liability different than, say, our current dial-a-ride program and the liability that we carry with that existing program?
On the dial-a-ride program, I know the retention level or the liability level is about $2 million.
So it's higher?
It's higher, and the indemnity...
And they provide full indemnity, I believe.
And they provide full indemnity. That's why, again, we brought this up to you, because that was a challenge we were facing.
This is a, I believe, I don't want to say radical departure, but it is a pretty, pretty big departure from how we normally do business.
Well, I just don't think a million dollars is very much money.
Well, I can tell you, that's one of the comments I was going to make. In today's world, a million dollars is not a whole lot, whether it be in negligence and certainly intentional tort claim. I can tell you, on the JPI level, we review many claims involving accidents that exceed $1 million pretty easily.
So what we...
Of course, it depends on the injuries that are suffered.
Correct.
And if you have multiple, you know, Lyft driver, you know, runs into somebody, you know, and kills somebody, obviously, you know, I mean, we hope that's not going to happen, but that's what you have insurance for. Those are easily exceed million-dollar claims, so...
But what we can do as staff is go back, talk to JPIA, talk to other third party... I've, we've used third-party vendors also for supplemental insurance before. I can explore the third-party market as well and just, and see how that, and how that plays out.
Is Lyft the only game in town?
For this program, yes.
As far as we know, yeah, I know, we asked that question last time. Do we happen to know, and maybe this isn't something that we can ask, what their accident rate is?
Again...
I'm just wondering. I don't know if that's something that they...
As Mr. Murphy says, as Mr. Murphy stated earlier, the Lyft does not entreat, and there's state legislation pending and a bunch of other stuff going on, they do not treat them as employees. So some of that information, they, in the contract that Mr. Murphy and staff have been trying to negotiate, there's a lot of exclusions of proprietary information and other things as well, so long answer to your question is not sure.
It seems that Lyft has done a pretty good job so far of basically shield themselves from most of all risk.
Yeah, they have.
Including the fact that they're not employees, and again, I don't know what this million-dollar insurance policy actually does cover. I think we need a little bit more information on that, because $1 million may sound good, but they've got to redefine print, obviously.
Very much so. Any additional questions, Vince?
I have a, go ahead, Vince.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Just a comment. I was trying to look for the gentleman's name, but Tom, you mentioned that we might not know of other cities that maybe have taken this on. I believe Monrovia was the very first in the San Gabriel Valley.
Yeah, that's, well, that's how we got involved in, remember?
Right.
So Monrovia, are they still having it? Do they still have it?
They still.
They do. It's been very successful in Monrovia. I did ask Brian to reach out to Dominic to see some time ago...
It wouldn't be Dominic in Monrovia.
Not Dominic, Oliver.
Well, he's not even, is he not there anymore?
No, no, but this was some time ago, just to see how they dealt with, with that indemn... What's...
Indemification.
There you go.
Indemification.
Indemification issue, but just coincidentally, my nephew is, I'm trying to look for the gentleman, had a meeting recently with the new, I guess he's the new director of the Lyft program to reach out to cities, because they only had one or two people, I think, in the past, and it just was very slow-moving, since it was a new program here in Southern California. So he sent me the gentleman's name, and then he reached out because he wants to come to COG to give a presentation to reach out to the San Gabriel Valley cities. So the San Gabriel Valley cities that were at the meeting, I'm going to say there was probably about 24 of them, were very much interested in having Lyft come and give a presentation. So at this point, we're probably the second in line to have a Lyft program in this area.
So, and that's it? Just us and Monrovia?
The others are interested, but they don't, they knew nothing really of it.
Well, and I think some of the discussion, and that's not related to what we're talking about tonight, is how much, how much of a benefit this program is going to be to our residents. I can see it, why it's working in Monrovia, they have a lot of destinations for the residents to go to. I don't know that we're in the same category as Monrovia in that particular regard, and I know that the area is limited per con, for the contract, as far as where they will take these people and stuff.
Well, you set, the city sets the parameters.
I know, but I mean...
So you could pick, like, go to Home Depot or...
Yeah, but it'll cost more and stuff. If we, the further out we go, I think, the less, the more costly it is to ride.
The original idea was to assist with first mile, last mile with Mazz Trantit, so...
To go to Mazz Trantit.
We would have, we would have a, you could start the Gold Line, but you would have to end in Temple City. You can go from Temple City, but you have to end at the Gold Line stations, those kind of things. So to assist with first mile, last mile, because we were a bit transit poor in other areas, this was to help to supplement some of the transit poor connections that we have, even though it's Foothill and others help us with that. But some parts of the city are a little bit rougher in terms of getting to the Gold Line and making it easier.
Or getting to El Monte Station.
I think the general idea is still a good idea. I think it's still something that we need to look at. It's just that, of course, now when you get down to the brass tacks, you know, there's these little hurdles that we're going to have to decide how we overcome them.
And we did think that it may help with our dial-a-ride also, even though they don't, they don't... And we did think that it may help with our dialer ride also, even though they don't, they don't, I know that they don't, uh, provide ADA or anything, but they may be able to help. Um, but I agree. We definitely need more information. Did anyone have?
I was just going to say that I think it's still prudent to reach out to Monrovia, because obviously, I mean, they have an intelligent council and they've probably asked these same questions, um, before in setting up their program. They probably had concerns. I don't know if they're in JPIA or not.
I was under the impression on reading something, and maybe I'm correct, that, that one of the problems, that Monrovia wasn't so much with the service, but the cost. I think it was a little more than what they anticipated, because remember, it's based on ridership.
Right, right. I remember that.
And all of a sudden, it really went off and wow, this is going to be a lot of money.
Remember, there was no cap either.
They didn't have a cap.
Which I guess is a good problem to have, but it was a problem, I think, so, I don't know. Well, I, 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 for one, am not prepared to, to go one way or another until we get some more information, I think, on this.
Did you have any other questions, Counselor? No?
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, for, open up for the public?
Yes, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to the public. And I do have a speaker for Steve Stafford.
For Steve Stafford?
Yes, I do. Yeah.
Mayor Fish, Mayor Protemper Chavez, council members and city staff. I've seen cities get indemnity insurance through the State Department of Insurance. They maintain a list. I've gotten it before when my friend had problems with developer and the, some of the insurance companies had went out of business. But a lot of cities have this wording with the insurance, hold harmless, in this case, the city of Temple City, for any occurrence. And they can get that type of insurance. It's a little expensive, but they can get it. I agree with Tom Chavez that this isn't ready to go forward and, uh, I don't know about a million dollars insurance. I think it should be hold harmless the city of Temple City all the way. You know, I know cities can get that. It's a little, like I said, it's a little pricey. There are some places that still write that, will write that. I just think not, the city not, just being indemnified partially, it should be hold harmless the city of Temple City on this. I just think it's a big problem doing it the way, the way you guys want to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any other public comments? Okay, do we have any additional council comments?
I just want to share the gentleman's name, Brian, and I'll shoot you his phone number. It's Logan McLeod, M-C-L-E-O-D.
And he's with the city of Monrovia?
No, he's the, um, new director of municipal services for cities. So you can reach out and, I don't know if Greg's spoken to that gentleman.
No, we haven't. That's, we'll, we'll speak with him.
Okay, do we have any, any additional comments? I'll entertain a motion.
I don't think you need a motion.
Don't, don't think we need a motion.
I don't need a motion.
I have good consensus direction on what we need to be able to move this forward.
Perfect. Thank you.
We'll be back with the information you need and then we can go from there.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and do our update from our city manager.
Mayor Fish, I know it's early evening, but I do have a few items tonight to discuss with the council. Both, uh, and it was timely that, uh, Councilmember Sternquist had brought up the ADU issue. You do have an IA memo about ADUs and some of the conditions and, um, provisions of the ADU ordinance for the city. If anybody in the public would be interested, that memo will be available to, in the city clerk's office as well. It takes some time to digest that, and if you, next meeting, you want to give me some direction. But I think it'd be helpful in the context to provide you with some additional information related to some issues related to the RENA numbers. The RENA numbers are developed, they are the housing, uh, numbers, the regional housing needs assessment. Every eight years, the state requires that subregional entities like SCAG, the Southern California Association of Governments, come up with a number of the housing needs in this, in, in that individual region.
Thank you.
The number that came into Southern California was quite staggering, and no offense to our state representative here, a little overwhelming. Of which, those RENA numbers would in fact compress the amount of housing that was developed in the last thirty years in the city into an eight-year period. Uh, I've said it before about the stormwater mandates. These are not achievable goals, um, but they seem to be carrying some potentially harsher penalties down the line. Staff will be providing, uh, SCAG with some technical, uh, comments related to this. The, the best way I can describe what the RENA numbers look like, uh, for the city of Temple City over that, that period of time under several different scenarios, we would have to, um, build upwards of two thousand six hundred to two thousand new units in the city. Right now, we're reporting our ADUs as affordable housing units, um, but the pace of which we're doing that will never, ever reach this level.
I thought it was, what was it before?
Uh, it was.
It was more like nine hundred something?
It was closer to nine hundred, so it almost doubled in the amount of size. The other challenge is, is that, um, the RENA numbers are not just made out of thin air. They're supposed to tie to the state policy goals of how the state is achieving, dealing with affordable housing in California. But also too, one of the goals of the state is reduction of greenhouse admissions and transit-oriented development. So, um, I did forward you the, um, executive director of the, um, San Gabriel Valley, uh, COG, uh, her quick write-up about it. Option, there's three options, one of which is closer to tied to housing being closer to transit-oriented development and other development. The city has done a very responsible job in it developing its specific plan to meet the prior RENA numbers. One of the things we're going to be commenting on is that we've done that, and to achieve this next level of additional housing, we're not, there's, there's, it's, I don't see a foreseeable way of actually doing that. The problem is if we say that in a plan going forward, the state's going to try to, you know, more than slap us on the wrist. They're looking at punitive fines going forward without meeting your housing requirements. You heard, um, in the last six months, city of Huntington Beach and other agencies, uh, being, uh, being penalized and, uh, by the state. This is going to be an ongoing issue. We are going to express our concerns on the staff level with the RENA, with the methodology of the RENA numbers going forward. In addition to, um, you'll see with the RENA numbers within the San Gabriel Valley, it paints a very different picture for some cities versus others as well.
Do they seem to be, are they tied to population of the cities?
So, option one and two is closer tied to both a combination of population and, um, trying to look towards transit-oriented development is where things would be built. Option three is more of the, uh, uh, a less, a lesser, uh, version of that. So our argument to them, at least in comments, would be, option two seems to be closer to your goals. If you were, if we were forced in a corner and said, pick one, two, or three, two would be closer to your goals of achieving affordable housing in, in areas where you can actually do it, where there is urban infill, where there's, where, um, transit-oriented development makes some sense.
Well, I'd just like to know why San Marino always comes down to not needing a whole lot and, uh, in comparison to other cities.
I won't bash our colleagues in San Marino, but, um.
It, it just seems to me that whenever it comes to affordable housing, they seem to come out, uh, on the good side all the time.
They also don't participate in mosquito abatement, just to let you know.
And they get away with it.
And we know mosquitoes come from San Marino.
They're not allowed, they're not allowed in San Marino.
Yeah.
So, I needed, so I think those two, the ADU issue and this, are somewhat, uh, are going to be at some point, if not already linked, somewhat linked together. So as we think about any, um, anything the council wants to bring up in the future, I'd like you to think of that and keep that in mind as well as we move forward.
Are you bringing this back to us?
Yeah, we're, um.
On, on the, on the RENA numbers, yeah, we, we need to comment to the SCAG by the thirteenth. So we're going to give an initial staff comment letter, and if the council feels as though they want to be even stronger on a political level, then, then I would, then we would, then we'd ask you to bring that, you can ask me to bring that back.
And also, I know you know with the legislature, there's many bills right now that are coming down regarding affordable housing in many different forms. So that is something we're going to have to address in the future. Um, I mean, it's just going to, it's going to happen.
That's, that is part of our, a bit of our concern is because we, we can zone, we can even incentivize, but we cannot force people to build housing. And the concern that we're having with the dramatic increase in the RENA numbers, plus the state legislation that is not just telling you to zone it, but to build it.
Right.
And not building it is now potentially, with some pending legislation, going to have punitive measures attached to those. That's what's a bit concerning with us. And on the staff level, we'll be able to express that. We can come back with something.
How can they make us build it? I mean, because, I mean, if the.
I don't know, sir.
You can zone it all you want and make it, like, you know, I, like, our ADU is actually like a little lighter, honestly, on, on the restrictions compared to other cities. I mean, we can do all that, but how can, but we're not in the business of redevelopment and taking that tool away from us a long time ago. How can we build it?
Absolutely. That's an argument, and I don't want to belabor this too long for the city attorney's sake, but, um, that's the challenge. We don't have the tool of redevelopment anymore, even if we wanted to incentivize.
Right.
Even, uh, uh, the, um, and I think affordable housing makes sense for, uh, you know, any community, but we don't even have the tool to assist in that process.
Right.
So I just want to bring these two things to your attention. A follow-up from the last meeting, but coincidentally, this just came out late last week in a bit of a rush too, so I want to let you know.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything else?
I, I just want to say, you know, what's so interesting about this is that every presentation at the Transportation Department at SCAG, every professor, every study from UCLA, USC, Berkeley, has shown that putting transit by transp, um, putting, um, affordable housing by transportation does not work.
But that's what they want. That's what they want, though. And that's like the number one thing.
And every, and every study shows that it doesn't make a major impact as much as people think it's going to do. And I think sometimes you have all these, you know, incredibly smart people who are going out and doing the work. And sometimes it's just, we, you know, I think that's when we need to reach out to our legislators and to our friends in Sacramento and tell them, take heed, listen, listen to what people who are dealing with transportation on a daily basis know about transportation and affordable housing. And, um, you know, if you, you sit at enough of these transportation meetings and people are being repetitive from different agencies and different scholars, you think, somebody should listen.
And there's three or four bills, and they all basically say the, say the same thing, but they're just changed in a, and, I mean, you have to pay such close attention. It's, it's, anyway, it's crazy.
Last, last thing, I took, I took a lot of time today. So last thing, uh, we are beginning our education efforts on our pavement management challenges that we have going forward. We have, um, we'll come back to it the next meeting. We have some numbers on terms of the cost of the election in March. And I will come back to you with that and, but we'll start educating the community about the fiscal challenges that we have related to pavement management going forward.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
Mm-hmm. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Oh, Moon Festival, sorry, this weekend, Saturday and Sunday, two PM to ten PM. Opening ceremonies at two PM at Temple City Park, uh, about thirty-four, thirty-five food vendors. The configuration is going to be a little bit different. They're going to have a little bit of, of some carnival kid games with the same vendor we use for Chamilla Festival. We'll be in front of the library, so a few little tweaks and changes.
And what time are they closing the street, just in case anyone's listening?
Four AM on Sunday. I mean, sorry, four AM Saturday.
Four AM Saturday, okay.
Yeah, so it'll be open all day and all night on Friday.
On Friday.
Saturday, early, early, early Saturday morning, we'll have the closure.
And then it'll reopen.
Yeah, when we reopen. Midnight, one, one o'clock morning? Sunday?
Sunday, no, we'll be open, excuse me, early, early Monday morning, hopefully before commute time.
Okay.
We're hoping, we're, we're hoping to be open before commute time on Monday.
You will be here. Thank you.
They did a great job last year. World Journal's a great partner.
They did.
I, I, one of the things we like about World Journal is, not that other event producers don't do a good job, but World Journal's not looking for this as their profit center. This is part of their overall, uh, community outreach, which makes them such a great partner, because anytime we ask for anything from them, they more than will, they give it to us and, and work with us, which is fantastic. And they're not worrying about squeaking out a couple extra thousand dollars or two thousand dollar profit off the, off the, off the event. They're really looking at to work at this as a community event.
What I like is they're here the whole, the whole weekend.
Absolutely, and that's a demonstration of that.
I mean, they have a lot of employees here, so.
They do, overwhelming amount, so they do a great job.
It is great.
So we're looking forward to seeing them again.
Thank you. And now a report from our city attorney.
The city manager's report was all about legislation and RENA, and, um, I think that probably covers our legal report for tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council reports? Yes, you may.
Just, um, I was going to ask our, um, city attorney to bring back in a, at our next meeting, the, um, dispensary ordinance from the California Supreme Court. On Monday, they ruled that the city of San Diego violated the law when it failed to study the environmental impact of cannabis dispensaries. So it's a, something that's very pertinent to cities, and I thought it would be helpful if Greg could bring back that report to us.
Sure. The, the case is called Union of Medical Marijuana Patients versus City of San Diego, and it dealt with whether an ordinance, uh, that addressed medical marijuana dispensaries, uh, was a project under CEQA. I'll bring the full report to you, uh, in two weeks. Happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to council reports regarding ad hocs or standing committee meetings. Do we have anything? No? Okay. Council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. Councilman Mann?
Thank you, Mayor. And just like Mr. Cook said, I'm really looking forward, well, I'm looking forward to the Moon Festival, but, uh, unfortunately, I had family vacation planned before we had the date set.
Dang it.
And Helen would not forgive me if I missed that. But I, I'm sure it's going to be a great, great event. I'm looking forward to Jerry's pictures, so I could live vicariously through. Yes. Oh, your favorite, yes. Yeah, actually, I can't eat that either. But yeah, I'm, I'm very, um, happy with, um, World Journal working with staff and, and I, I really like that they, they were, they're trying to integrate more, uh, kid-friendly elements to it. I, I felt, uh, last year, maybe that was not as present. I mean, they did have, you know, some of the arts and crafts things, but I think what they're planning now is taking it to a, a different level, but also sticking with sort of what we know works best for, for the space that we have. Uh, so I really appreciate them, them doing that and kind of like what you alluded to earlier, uh, just like last year, they had so much staff visibly present. You know, they had those vests that you knew that was.
You could always find someone.
Yeah, so, so like if you needed anything, you could flag someone down. So yeah, looking forward to that, and, uh, that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Lighting and lighting.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist?
Since we have Mr. Barrera here, I thought it would.
Uh-oh.
I just wanted to share that, um, you know, Susan has been such a great friend to Temple City, especially with the maintenance, lighting and landscape district, that, whatever that terminology is, but, um, and also with, um, domestic violence. Her support for women and especially what, how she's reached out to the San Gabriel Valley. And the city of El Monte put on her, uh, domestic violence, uh, program, and she was, both her and her sister came in, and they were just great friends of the city there. But, um, one of the things that, uh, I know some, it's been on Facebook and I know we've talked about it at COG, is really taking a, a stand against fighting high drug costs in, um, in the state of California. And I know she's, you know, she's, she's out there and she leads the charge. So, um, just if you could mention that, um, in discussions, that it's something that is a very important to the San Gabriel Valley COG and, and looking in how we can help alleviate some of those high costs for pharmaceuticals. So, just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Councilmember, you?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, yeah, I too, looking forward to the Moon Festival. And I have some stinky tofu for Councilmember Mann as well. But actually, I, I'm very hope, hoping that.
hope, hoping that Senator Rubio would, would come and attend. Hopefully, well, then we can get a chance to thank her in person for what she did for us.
Thank you. Mayor ProTim Chavez?
Just real briefly, I just wanted to report out on the youth committee, kind of an update. I think we had discussed, once they get started, they're going to come themselves and kind of give the council maybe a monthly update of what they've been up to. But as I previously mentioned, they, they were able to meet with Senator Rubio's office. I think, Edward, I think you were there, weren't you, as part of that? And so thank Senator Rubio for lending her staff's time. To them, we also visited with Assemblymember Ed Chow, and they were very gracious and answered a lot of questions of the committee. And so both very good, very good, I think, experiences for the youth committee. And hopefully, they'll be able to use that as they move forward. So other than that, look forward to a good weekend. Hopefully, it'll be a little cooler than last weekend. The weather will be better for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have just a couple of things. Again, Moon Festival, I'd like to comment that one of the things I really enjoyed was a lot of the local entertainment that they used. They used a lot of the groups. It was great, wonderful to showcase all of our local community, our children and our cheerleading squads and everything. So it was, it was great. I thought that was wonderful. The other thing I'm actually really happy about is the fact that it's starting at 2:00 in the afternoon. And it's, so they actually made it later. So it, it's going to be hot, obviously, but it's got to be better than it is if it started at 11:00. So I don't know who made that decision, but I think it's great. I think it'll keep us cool. The other thing I just wanted to mention again is Relay for Life is coming October the 12th here at Temple City Park from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Please come out and join us. We'll be celebrating. We also have entertainment, food, all different kinds of things. So we hope that you can come and join us. And that's all I have. Okay, do we have any additional public comments? You? Okay. You need to come up here and you need to fill out a speaker request form, but you can do it after. Okay, you need to come up here.
Hi, everyone. I'm not exactly familiar with the formalities, but no, I have all due respect for you. Hi, my name's Jason. It's been a while since I've been in a city council meeting. Resident of Temple City, basically just trying to get more involved with the community again. And I figured one of the best ways, why not just stop by a city council meeting and, you know, start attending more regularly. So you'll all be seeing me here more often.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, and yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Okay, are there any other additional public comments? Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and adjourn for tonight. Thank you.